Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Could you stand for a moment, silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please? Amen? The pledge of allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, you want to come to the microphone?
No.
There I am. I don't know. Some of the tracks are still in business after what else is to work. I'm not sure the doors will be closed again. You guys persevered through it, and we can congratulate you. Whereas for over fifty years, community health centers have provided a high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventive healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. And whereas the country's largest primary care network, health centers now serve as the healthcare home for over twenty-five million Americans in over ten thousand delivery sites across the nation, one in every fifteen people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. And every day, health centers are developing new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their community. Whereas the Sioux City Community Health Center is a critical economic engine, helping to power the local economy by generating millions of dollars in combined economic impact and child creation. Health centers save the entire houses in billions of dollars annually by managing chronic conditions and keeping patients out of cross-therapy healthcare settings like hospital emergency units. And whereas National Healthcare Centers week off gives the opportunity to recognize America's health centers, their dedicated staff, board members, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I have the City Council to hereby proclaim August 12 through the 18th, 2018. As National Healthcare Center, we can extend our appreciation to the Sioux City Community Health Center for its years of dedicated service to the people of Sioux City. I'd like to present this to you. Can't tell you, Dan, under this talking, how important you are to our community and thank you for that, for what you do every day on the front line. So say a few words if you would.
I want to thank all the members of the council and thank the city of Sioux City for all the support that we have garnered from you over the past decades of our existence. Last year, we served over twenty-eight thousand patients at the prenatal patients. So we play a vital role in the delivery system of healthcare in this community. We have always enjoyed and appreciated and been honored to be a partner in this community. We appreciate the support that you have given us, and we look forward to many, many more years of sustaining that partnership and providing access to care for those people who otherwise would have not.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interview for Events, Facility Tourism Advisory Board, John Myers. John, come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve.
As a summary level, I have a master's degree in public administration and served thirty-three years in city government, twenty-nine years as finance director and budget director for the city of Sioux City. After that, I served for eight years on the Sioux City School Board. During that time, I've served on the former events board, served on the ORFIM board, and some other boards and commissions. I'm interested in the events board for a couple of reasons. One is the ordinance that established the events board set aside one position for the ORFIM board. I was asked to fill that position by the ORFIM board at a formal board meeting. Herb Johnson looked at me and said, "John, will you do it?" Herb is a hard person to say no to. So that's why I'm here. Also, I did the financial systems design that ended up building the convention center and the Tyson, as well as other facilities, and I'm kind of interested in seeing how they're used and how things go. That's, in essence, that's it.
Questions?
I think we've known John long enough that you've got a great history, so that's a big plus.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. We'll go to the consent agenda, which are items three through twelve C. You can consider the item to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on any of the items, please come forward and state your name and address. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address under citizen concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second, three is the reading of the City Council minutes of August 6, 2018. Four is a motion accepting the annual evaluation of the museum director. Do you like to say anything about Mr. Wonderful, or just does the report speak for itself?
Mr. Wonderful, AKA Steve Hansen, our executive director, puts in long hours at the museum and certainly has helped us become a community center for the citizens of Sioux City. In addition to directing multiple, multiple exhibits, we're pretty excited about the next year because we think we've got a big one coming, well, a couple. And we appreciate all the support from the City Council and your encouragement.
All right.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you, Mr. Wonderful.
Five are resolutions adopting plans in respect for the 2018 sidewalk program. Six are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a grant agreement authorized by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Community Development Block Grant. B is a resolution approving a grant agreement authorized by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Home Investment Partnership. C are resolutions approving an inter-local agreement with Woodbury County to apply for the 2018 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program for the Police Department. D is a resolution authorizing the library director to submit a 2018 Missouri River Historical Development Fall Grant application for new shelving and furniture for the Morningside Museum. E is a resolution authorizing the library director to apply to the Iowa Public Library Grant for upgrades at the Morningside branch. Seven are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area on September 1st for the Firehouse Bar into the Summer Bash fundraiser. B is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of the West Lane of Pierce Street from 3rd to 6th on September 21st for the Downtown Partners Parking Day Event. C is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Lewis Park Road on September 7th for the YMCA BBQ and Blues on the River, or by the River event. Eight are actions relating to agreements and grants and contracts. A is a resolution approving a school trip or a green service. Mayor, I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest. B is a resolution approving a contract to advance audiovisual for the council chamber's audiovisual replacement project. C is a resolution approving a contract to KMP Construction for the 2018 Sidewalk Ramp Program. D is a resolution approving a contract to Mark Al Benicious for the Bridgeport Roadway Improvement Space Board Project. Nine are appointments to boards or commissions. A is a motion appointing Lila Plambek to the Events, Facilities, and Tourism Advisory Board for a two-year term expiring June 30th, 2020. B is a resolution approving, appointing Barbara Slonaker to the Events, Facilities, and Tourism Advisory Board for a four-year term expiring June 30th, 2022. Ten are approved total check station for the reporting period July 2018 in the amount of $8,351,953.14. Eleven are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Twelve are receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. What we have, what we have on the Events, Facilities, and Tourism Advisory Board with Mr. Myers, if he's back on the agenda for an appointment, would that fill out the?
Yes.
That completes the board?
The ORFIM position is the last position to fill with the approval of the two that you, Mayor, just read.
So we haven't placed the next, or their first initial meeting that they'll have to organize?
Oh, we got an appointment. I will work with the Kirk's office, and we'll get the first meeting scheduled.
Oh, perfect. Passes four, zero, thirteen. Hearing an ordinance adopting a modified site plan for 111 Third Street, petitioner's SAE partners, PNSI recommends approval with conditions. First consideration passed July 23rd, 2018. Second consideration passed August 6, 2018. I move third reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? I need to abstain on that item. Passes four to zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Items fourteen through eighteen are hearings on manager's report on demolition and declaring construction to be dangerous or dilapidate and authorizing city manager to carry out such order. First up is fourteen, is the property at 1721 23rd Street. Owner is Victor Diaz. Let them give the background, then you can speak, okay?
Daryl Bollock, code enforcement manager, 1721 23rd Street was placarded on October 26th of 2016 through, due to dilapitation, tree falling on the house. Interior of the house had been opened up in several areas, potentially load-bearing areas that had been opened and removed. There was many electrical violations as well. The neighboring property owners have been calling our house, we've been trying to, or calling our office due to nothing being done. So at this point, council is asked for demolition.
Now, go ahead and come up and state your name and address, please.
I'm speaking for Victor. My name's Pat Moulton. I live at 310 South Prescott. He had some family problems and had to go to Mexico. That's why there was nothing getting done. We just started a business back up, and we was hoping to get to this.
Can he post a $10,000 bond?
Can you post a $10,000 bond?
We're just gonna try, yeah, to do it. We have the balances to fix at this time, but yeah, we just gotta try to find the money to keep working on it. Because we paid to one electrical, the electrical guy, we already paying, but I don't know if he called the city or not. We started it, but then when I come and I don't have the money, so he come and with me when we.
He's gonna need to state his name and address, too, please.
That's Victor.
It's, I'm Victor.
What's your address?
1412 Yanni Street.
Does he understand if we defer this, or give him a ninety-day, he's gotta post a $10,000 bond and come down to the city and have plans?
Yeah.
Okay? You understand that?
Yeah.
What's your decision if that's the case?
It's fine, because if they fail, then we can use that for demolition of the property. We have abandoned cars out back, been on there for over a year. We've got tree debris on neighboring properties that now has been removed. Excuse me, I'm speaking now. Tree debris that was on the neighboring property for over a year with multiple complaints wasn't getting removed. The back corner of the house is still opened up. If they can get the repairs done in that ninety days, I'd be supportive of that, but they'd have to post that $10,000 bond requirement.
You're gonna have to move quick.
Yeah, well, the problem, the car, that he see him as the neighbor, there's a neighbor that other side, he don't got no parking. And I tell him, and he's got his brother truck, and one band was the one guy, my friend, but I already tell him, move it, move it away from there. But the truck that wasn't in there, the next neighbor, he don't got no parking, and he parking all the times and behind.
So how do we word this?
Maybe he think it's mine, because he don't drive.
How do we word this, so that we make sure that either that?
We already clean.
That the bond doesn't get posted, that we don't come back?
It's just a ninety-day stay of demolition with bond. If they fail to do that within ten days, it's in the agreement, then it automatically defers to demolition.
I'll move that. You got ten days to get everything worked out with Daryl. You don't have it worked out in ten days, the house is coming down.
Okay, yeah, because we already clean the whole branches and everything.
You have to post the bond.
But you have to come up with $10,000 bond.
Yeah, okay.
You gotta get, you gotta get this week and see Daryl.
Yes.
All right.
Mayor just moved it. Rhonda, did you second the motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, may vote with your electronic panels.
Passes five, zero. Good luck. Fifteen is 2306 South Patterson, owner of Cheryl Layer.
2306 South Patterson was placarded on December 18th of 2017. Due to dilapitation, I actually did visit this house yet today. Concern from some of the neighbors, and it looks exactly like that photo that was taken when it was placarded. Nothing has changed. Staff is asking for demolition.
Anyone to be heard? I'll move demolition.
Second.
I'm just gonna call the votes, so we don't have to go back and forth on the pictures. Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Sixteen is 2829 First Street, the garage only. Owners, Marguerite McFadden. Anyone to be heard? I'll move it.
I don't know what's wrong with that, Daryl. Pull the car.
Couple of paint and clock.
Just because the door's open, is that what you're minding?
Call the roll.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Seventeen, property 4209 Davis Avenue. Owner Larry Sean Rock. Anyone to be heard? This is not that bad a house, is it?
It's got a lot more issues than what it looks like from, from the surface. Could it be saved? I believe it probably could. We've had several people that have been interested, and I don't know if it's because there's so much against the title for trying to get it cleaned up, but it is, nothing's been done there. We've had to go back and secure it several times.
Anyone to be heard? I'll move it.
Second. Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Eighteen is 1901 West Highland. Owner Barbara Sisman and Michael Spees. Anyone to be heard? Come on up, state your name and address.
Timz Monik, 2201 Collins Street.
James Lamore, with Keller Williams, 103 Virginia. We would like to stay on this to try to sell the property as is, see what happens with it, see if you guys will give us a couple of weeks to clean it up, a couple of weeks to get us on the market, and hopefully sell it within the next couple of months.
How long has it been sitting like this?
It has not been terribly long. It was October 13th of 2017.
Well, that's almost a year.
Ten months.
Nine months, ten months.
Compared to some of the others that we've tried to get something done with, that's pretty short, unfortunately, so.
What'd you get tagged for?
It was sanitation. They've been living it without any water was the initial call on it. Sanitation got a little, then things start steamrolling after that, so. You know, I mean, if we'd set a date, I don't know, you know, if two months is the right number, but if you come up with some kind of a date to defer it to a certain date, you know, I would support that. I'd like to see somebody get a hold of this house, address to take it to council for demolition. I don't know. But we would be supportive of that if they, I would want a date set, not to just in the future.
I'll move defer until September 9th.
Okay, I have one question before I do that. Are we gonna make him do a bond?
Not if you're deferring it. You do not need a bond at this time.
Okay.
Daryl, have you been in it recently?
I have not.
I went by this morning. I'd almost venture a guess or hazard a guess that there are people living in it. Looks like it's accessible, looks like there's some garbage out and back, and maybe a little bit of mowing that had been done.
I did that.
Pardon me?
I did the mowing.
You did the mowing?
Yeah, I just.
Nobody living in it?
I don't know. It kinda looks like there might be somebody in there.
Yeah.
We've had, we've actually gone to the house several times and ran them out. Can't be there 24/7, but.
Yeah, no, okay.
You guys are both from here, so you should probably know what's going on with your house or anything. I mean, that's just a kind of an obvious question, so.
I think there's a lot of circumstances beyond that, that some people don't have control on, if I'm not, that would normally to be in place, but not, not in this case. So if, if owners have the opportunity to sell it, if they're all, all parties are willing to sell it and get it into hands of somebody that could make, make repairs of it in a short amount of time, I would be supportive of that.
I'll second the motion.
To defer to September 10th is the Monday. Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to citizen concerns first. Mayor, can I just ask Daryl one quick question? That house on South Patterson, I went by that yesterday, too. I noticed the garage, at least, is open, and it looks like it could fall on its own at any time. Do we go out in the meantime before demolition and?
Or to put it on the line.
And secure? Ho, 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 ho.
To show that we're proceeding.
Ho, Alex, ho. Everybody. Pete, you have the floor.
Yeah, we would constantly monitor that until it came to the point of demolition. We'll move forward with the asbestos reports right away, and then we'll start monitoring that as each contractor goes in to make sure it's resecurated at the end of each one and that it's safe.
Yeah, it, it looks like it needs to be. Thank you very much. Sorry, fellas. Now, you have to tell September 10th.
To get it ready to sell, or to have a purchase agreement signed, or what?
Get it sold.
Get it sold by September 10th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, noise complaint. Frank Wellenstein. Come on up. Frank's from 704 Street. Doesn't have to give his address, because he already did.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll be very brief. Frank Wellenstein, 704 Street, just moved back to Sioux City after thirty-one years absence. My wife and I went to high school, I went to high school there, and we met at Briar Cliff. So we spent a career away, military in Omaha, and we just moved back to the 700 block, 4th Street there, 7th, Fourth and Jackson. And to our surprise, we kind of got made aware of some strange circumstances here recently. Shock and dismay, I guess. One, we were lied to by a realtor about the status of the Howard Johnson's Hotel. Told it was closed, so we've been living here for about two and a half months, and frankly, I'm just a little surprised that that's still speaking, if you will, representing the HOA. So, yeah, so there, we, we hope for the best, and the weekend went by, and it was the worst. I suffer, as a disabled veteran, from inabilities at sleep, right? So I live downtown Omaha, so it's a Riviera Theater, you know.
Oh.
And I commend them for trying to make a complaint for the police, you know? And so I'm just, it's not my nature to complain about things. I'm normally a pretty positive person, so I apologize for that, first off, but this has really kind of got us, you know, all scared and nervous, and I bring it to your attention today in hopes that maybe something can be done about sooner than later. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we're kind of aware of it, but not as much as what you are, but we'll be working on it to see what we can get done with our legal department.
Much appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to us.
Anyone else to be heard? Anyone to be heard, come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
This is under council concerns or?
Yeah.
Citizen concerns?
Yes.
Citizen concerns, okay. Well?
Come to the microphone and state your name and address if you want to, okay? Thank you.
My name's David Keen. I live at 1106 Fourth Street, and I just saw the articles in the paper about the settlement that there was with that couple for seven million some dollars, and they didn't have attorneys, apparently, or they had attorneys, but they didn't file a suit. So I just wanted to get some information for myself and for our community as far as what exactly happened in this situation. Was there an effort to find, I would certainly think so, contributory negligence on the party's part that, who was injured? Did he try to run a yellow light when it maybe was gonna be turning red real soon? Do you know about that? Was there a situation where he was using his cellphone? Anything like that? You know, I, there just wasn't enough information in the paper for me to feel like, like I should just, you know, let it go like everybody else, or whatever, like a lot of people may, you know? They expect the city to handle things properly, and I'm, I can feel, you know, fairly confident that it was, but I would just like some more information about this. They also said here, this gal said, Roseanne, said in the article that I also conclude, this suit is being concluded here, and I also conclude my near forty-seven-year relationship with Sioux City this evening as well. I am no longer proud to be from this community and will no longer claim it as my hometown. So, you know, I would like to know what her reason was for that.
You should probably ask her.
What's that?
Probably ask her on that one.
Probably ask her.
Yeah, well, I mean, so.
Let me just put it this way, it was a negotiated settlement, and it was negotiated with our insurance company that paid the vast majority of that claim, and they felt it was in the best interest to settle the claim, so.
Do you know what the extent of the brain injury was?
No, we're not gonna go into that detail here.
Why?
If you, if you want that information, whatever the city attorney has, it's a public document, we will be glad to get, but I'm not gonna discuss a person's condition. I'm not gonna do that. Wouldn't do it about yours, I'm not gonna do it about anybody else.
That's fine. I mean, you know, I sure don't feel bad asking.
That's fine. You have every right to, and.
All right, hold on.
Anything else you want, we'll get from the city attorney's file.
So then, you know, she said that she, that they would not be able to have a child of their own. I'd like to know why that was.
Again, not going there.
Okay.
You ask, you, you got a question to her, you ask her the question.
Oh, I thought maybe you guys would know about this.
Don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so the city attorney's gonna know about this, and they'll be glad to give me the information. Is that correct?
Whatever the public record allows us to give you.
... related to personal medical conditions. You would have to ask the.
So, let's see here. And it says here, "We will not go quietly into the night, but we will be a light of hope for all with brain injuries. Please be careful and drive safely." So we don't know whether this person was driving safely or not, exactly.
Obviously.
You know, maybe he was speeding or.
Can I provide one additional comment, Mayor? And I will.
You know, I was wondering also, as far as the insurance goes.
Sir, I can answer one of your questions. The Iowa State Patrol provided an in-depth investigation, independent review regarding.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The Iowa State Patrol provided an in-depth accident reconstruction document that is a public record. If you go through the Iowa State Patrol, that's something you can obtain related to the accident. It was fully investigated and a.
Ma'am, I'm really sorry. I can't hear a word you're saying. I'm trying to speak up. I wish you would.
All right, enough. Or you're done.
I can't, I can't really hear what she's saying.
Okay, I'll tell you what she said, then.
Because I feel embarrassed, like, that I can't respond if I can't hear her.
You got one more time, and then you're gonna sit down. Now.
Okay.
Okay. Now, what she said was, it was fully investigated by the Iowa Patrol. That report is on file with the Iowa State Patrol, and that tells who was at fault very clearly. Okay? That's what she said. Now, did you hear that?
Oh, that's what she said? Okay.
Yes.
So we can be absolutely sure, then, that that report was correct?
Why don't you get the report and determine that yourself? We're pretty.
Well, I am gonna have to take a look at that.
When we voted on the settlement, we were pretty, pretty.
I mean, then you have to assume that the law, the law enforcement is doing their job right.
I, they were independent in this particular case.
I see. Okay. So anyway, well, I'll check that out, then. Now, can I bring up another Let's see here. I mean, I'm sorry that that happened to them. I have no idea. Maybe they should have gotten even more money. I mean, I'm glad they didn't have a bucket list or chance to do any of them yet, but maybe they would have piled that on.
Did you say you had another topic, sir?
Yeah. I'd like to know what the situation was with the concert at the Tyson Events Center, where there was like 200 people that showed up. I thought the Spectra organization was gonna be managing all these events, and I wonder if that was something that prevented Sioux City from making more money with only having 200 people show up. I never saw any ads about it.
You'll have to ask Spectra. I don't know.
So, I'm just kind of surprised, because they said there was like, you know, six or eight bands with a bunch of hits from the 80s. I may have gone. I don't know if the tickets would have been $60 or what, but I would have maybe considered it. So, anyway, is there anyone that has any information about that?
No. We're waiting for the profit loss. Obviously, it just happened last week.
Okay. And let's see here. Do you know how long Lou Weinberg has owned the Warrior Hotel as part owner of it? Because my dad invested in that like 30 years ago as a limited partnership or something, and I believe he lost all of his money, and that's what can happen with an investment. But, boy, it's been going on for a long time, and I really don't know if that's, it's a $56 million investment. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, is there, does anybody know how long he's owned the building?
Nope.
How long he's been trying to get this done?
At least 30.
I mean, there's something to be said for persistence.
Well, he's persisted. But at least 30 years, you're right.
Yeah. Okay, so I would caution the city council to, regarding all these matters, to, you know, make sure they're checking things out thoroughly, especially that lawsuit, because I would certainly think possibly some more investigating that would be done about that before I just.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Council concerns.
No, sir, thank you.
Jeff?
I know we're not gonna be that lucky.
Yep. So tomorrow, there is 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I believe it's open to the public. If I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Pete?
I, I think it was, the way it read, Alex, originally was you were to call and register, but that, I think they would accept people.
No, I think you can go just at the museum.
Yeah.
It's a public meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, public me, it's at the convention center from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Convention center or museum?
Museum, I believe, is what I thought.
Is it a museum?
Museum.
Oh, I have it on here as it was supposed to be at the convention center. So, thank you.
I've got on my calendar anyways, museum.
Yes.
Museum, yeah. Linda just confirmed it. So, thank you. Sorry about that, public museum. And then on the 18th, this Saturday, we'll have the first annual art affair downtown. I know they have over 20 artists booked that are going to be coming down and exhibiting their work. There's going to be live music. There's going to be food options available. And so that's going to be right across the street from Pearl Street Park, so right down in that area. So I would recommend going there on Saturday. It is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
We have a joint meeting tomorrow.
At noon?
Yeah.
Correct.
It's here.
And the council.
Oh, that's right.
The bus on, or. Yeah. The transit.
It was here this time.
Advisory board. I have nothing, Mayor. I move for adjournment. Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?